Jamie?
Uh, no, sir.
Mary?
No.
All right, I just have one. The town presents the Boston Post Road Kane to the oldest resident, and we haven't done it in a while. And we usually put their name on a plaque downstairs.
Oh.
And it was brought to my attention that we have a resident on March 7th who will be turning 106 years old, Cecil Hewitt. So if we could look into getting her name on the plaque and getting her the recognition, because it's impressive.
106?
106. So that's pretty good.
That's worthy of recognition.
Yeah.
Wow. God bless.
Yes.
What's the last name, Hubert?
Hewitt.
Hewitt.
H-E-W-I-T. So happy birthday to her on March 7th. Um, we're still a little early for the public hearing. Want to do an action item, or do you have a quick update?
I can give a quick update.
Yeah.
Um, we have, uh, coming up on March 17th, the Daughters of the American Revolution will be presenting a plaque across the street at the cemetery, a dedication plaque. And, uh, the public is invited to the two o'clock ceremony. So we're pretty excited about that. Mr. Brier has been the lead with the DAR. And, uh, they're an interesting group, and they have a, uh, they have a full, um, uh, conference and events going on, uh, that whole weekend. But March 17th, the two o'clock across the street, uh, anybody who would like to come to, um, honor Revolutionary Soldiers.
Nice, good, thank you.
Excited about that.
Yeah.
And other than that, I do not have any further updates.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Nice and easy to know.
Unusually quiet. That's dangerous.
I know, it's quite a week.
Yeah.
I think you're almost there, Chase.
We're almost there.
I could probably think of stuff to come up with.
Yeah, that's all right.
I mean, do you want to quickly do those, the action items, those, the first three action items collectively?
Yeah, let's, let's do that.
So those are...
Maybe we can do an hour.
Oh, are we there?
Yeah, I think it's, that's, that's cracking.
All right, that's...
We want to keep them.
Yeah, we want to keep them waiting.
Just so we have to hear about our others.
Six, seven.
I don't want to say malarkey.
Compared to, yes, from their perspective, it probably wouldn't be.
So I'll turn it over to Mary now, you want to read the, uh...
Yes. Notification is hereby given that an application has been filed by Into the Grain LLC for new liquor license at the premises currently located at 559 Main Street, Unit 208 in Fistale. With the Sturbridge Board of Selectment in accordance with MASH General Lodge, Chapter 138, a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, February 21, 2023, 6:35 PM. Hearing will be held at Veterans Memorial Hall, Sturbridge Town Hall, 301 Main Street, Sturbridge. Here we are.
Here we are. So Into the Grain LLC is into the grain axe throwing. We're going to be doing family amusement, um, axe throwing over where the old Manny's Taqueria, old subway was in the Sturbridge Mill Yard. Uh, we're looking for a liquor license to serve local beer, wine, and local spirits, um, from our distillery right next door. I know we had a meeting earlier with Robin and the police chief and...
Health Department.
Health Department and Building Commission, um, to discuss opening the old doorway between the two spaces. Um, the police chief didn't have an issue with it. They thought it would be a better option than to have someone trying to chug a beer and leave than take their beverage over to the distillery and sit and have a meal.
So if I, to provide a little more context to, to some of this, because of the distillery license and the nature of the distillery license, they can't serve anything other than their own home brew, if you will, in the distillery side. At the axe throwing side, they'd like to be able to serve beer and whatever else. That has to be a separate liquor license, because the distillery license will only allow them to serve what they produce. So they need a separate liquor license. But with that came a host of questions, because they're two different LLCs. We worked with Ken and Health Department to determine if they could serve food, which they'll be applying for Victorian license. Uh, well, it'll be a slash, it'll be one license, and Ken has approved that they can share a kitchen. So the two entities will share a kitchen. Food can be served, and this was where the challenge was with the door. Did it become one entity from a zoning standpoint and a capacity standpoint? So Nelson worked to ensure that the door opens the proper way. Uh, Fire has ensured that we have no capacity issues, right?
Yes, yes.
Lieutenant Ash signed off on this. Uh, so the reason there was such a host of meetings is the complexity of these two licenses and this one license really restricting them, forcing them to have to have a separate license. Uh, the concerns we had again were if somebody wanted to go over to the other side to eat, if we couldn't allow food service on one side, well, they have to have some food for the, for the liquor license, maybe prepackaged crackers, but they want people to be able to have a quick snack from one side, not chips or salsa or whatever from one side. So we had to work sort of across different entities, and that's kind of how we arrived here. And that's why this required, um, the meeting of so many different people, just to give you all a little background on these two businesses and why they need two separate liquor licenses.
So is there now a door separating the, the, or not, the axe throwing from the...
Yeah, so the, oh, the old mill has the old brick archway. When they separated the spaces, they basically just boarded it up. It looks, we made it look like a faux door on the distillery side, but what we're going to do is just pull those boards out, and it just becomes an opening now. And there's like a little foyer, it's already, it already has been there. It was the old, part of the old kitchen.
You could go from one to the other.
Yes, yeah, so it's super easy.
Only servers will be going in between, right? Or do we end up deciding that people, patrons?
The police chief wanted patrons to be able to go, because they didn't want to be able to have anyone hand off drinks or food to somebody else.
That was the concern, but how could someone take...
Well, that's just so awkward for pa, for customers to be told, you know, you can't go from one room to the other.
And if they wanted to go, and if they wanted to go sit down and have dinner, we didn't want them chugging that last beer on one side before they went over to the distillery. Instead, they can take their beer and finish it with their dinner, which is safer than having people just chugging it or anything else.
And then they're just ordering whatever.
Are you having a full dinner type of menu?
We have tacos and...
Oh, nice.
Yeah, yep.
On the distillery, on both sides, actually.
On both sides, yes. It's just, there's a time constraint on the axe throwing side. Basically, if you're coming with four people, you have like 30 minutes. So you're, and you, there's no place to really sit. There's ledges that you can put food and drink on. But most people, I mean, I know, I like to sit and eat. I don't like to stand and eat. So they might want to do the axe throwing, and then we'll give them like a coupon at the end if they want to go on the other side and get 10% off a meal and a beverage. They could go on the other side and sit down and enjoy a meal.
Not have to finish that beer.
Not have to finish what they're doing, yeah.
And just walk over, but they can't go back.
But it also complies with the fact that they're serving alcohol, and they will have an option for food on the axe throwing side. They can't have that separate liquor license without an option for food.
Right, there is an option for food.
So you can have chips, let's say, while you're throwing the axes. You might not want to have tacos, but you might grab chips and salsa.
I have an unrelated question, may I ask it, Chase? Okay. Well, it's related to the axe throwing, so I've been before. Are you going to have like an instructor that ensures that it's being thrown correctly and all that?
Did you say you've gone before?
Oh, yes.
You've been axe throwing? Mary's been axe throwing.
Yeah, well, because my, it was a gift to my husband from our son. And so, you know, I'm not going to get left out. But I had somebody that stayed with me for like 30 minutes, till it finally stuck. And that's very gratifying feeling when it hits, but I didn't know, because... So it is. But it took me a while to get that list down.
Yes, the rotation.
And I had somebody helping me, so I've just, from a safety perspective for people who don't know what they're doing.
Yep, so everyone, when you walk in, you basically, everyone has to sign a waiver. There's only going to be a two-drink maximum while you're throwing. We're not going to allow, we have the right to refuse someone if they come in intoxicated. So all of that is right there, it's all over our website.
And you'll have an instructor showing the right way to throw it.
Yeah, they show you the way to throw it, and then they continuously check on the guests as they're throwing. And then we're offsetting the lane usage too, so it's not like they're all coming at the same time, they're all throwing at the same time, they're offset like by 15 minutes.
So our son actually joined a league, are you going to have like a league too?
That's the plan, yeah.
Sturbridge.
Yeah. Right?
I'll have to go over there, I'll have to board a selectmen one day.
A lot of alcohol and axe throwing.
I don't drink, but I, I do throw axe throws.
We do have mocktails too, and we have local sodas too, so...
If I'm understanding just exactly what's happening correctly, and just so I follow, it's been a long day. So on the distillery side, that's under the license that you, that is brewing what you, you have. But now we're getting a larger license that does all spirits and wine and beer, whatever. The axe throwing is on the side with, that is having your, your total liquor license, and that doesn't apply to the license. I mean, it's not really our issue, it's just more confusing than anything. And so... Okay, I don't, I mean, spirits either way. If there's hard liquor...
Alcohol and axes either way.
I don't see what the, yeah, there's nothing to really be conservative about. Okay, that's all, I just wanted to know.
It's just good that the food will be served.
Oh, 100%, no, no, it's always good.
Absolutely.
Question, as far as what one license allowed and what one didn't, and that's where it became complicated.
It just sounds like a larger conversation with your insurance company. I'm just wanting to make sure we're, we're fine.
Yes, we're fully insured.
I can't see why, what's the difference to us, so, um, that's all I had.
And, uh, our chair had a few comments that I just wanted to echo. And the first was on the sketch, she, it was like a seating capacity for how many, how many people are going to...
On the axe throwing side?
Yeah.
Oh geez, um...
There's two purling, so around 30?
Forty, I think. Because then they'll be, there could be four waiting on the, on the side, I think, right? Does that sound right? I think it's 40.
And, yeah, that's, that sounds right. And then on page six, the 11B needs a little more information. Just, that can be a...
Is that the patio?
No, that's the existing management agreements and interest in an alcoholic beverages license. Does any interest, individual or entity identifying question 11A and applicable attachments have any direct or indirect beneficial or financial interest in any other licenses, how alcoholic beverages?
Yes, because we have, all three of us are the same owners as the distillery. So we already have a license, we have a farmer's, distillers, and a farmer's pours permit on the distillery side. Same ownership for the other side.
So but other than those two?
Nothing, nope.
Perfect.
So should they have filled out yes or no, though, for 11B, C, D, E? Had it maybe what Mary was asking?
Yeah.
Because we left a...
It's, it's a yes.
Left blank.
It's a yes with, um, and I guess we can say for the record, right? With the yes, what's the name, are all three of your names on the license? And it's the, and it's the farmer's brewing, and we have the license number, and the municipality's here. So I think it's, I mean, I'm fine with it, we can just fill out the paperwork.
Yeah, me, me too, that's, yep, yep. And, and we spoke, they're going to share the common vic with the, with the food service for the other restaurants.
Right, the two, the two share vic, uh, common. They'll have, if the license, both names will be on the common vic license, is that how we...
Yeah, I'll have a new, I'll do one new...
Yeah.
Yeah, like she gave me the...
I think page seven needs to be filled out.
Seven needs to be filled out.
Yes, so they, both, both these pages should be filled out.
Well, 11, 11, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, is if we have a third party, and we do not have a management party.
Let me open that up.
So that's why we're a no for that.
I think it's all, I think it's just questions that are all fine, that we know the answer is to, that just needs to be filled out. It's not, yeah.
Yeah.
It's all like just no, yes, no. It's not like we get no, no, you guys are at this point.
You can find us. We live right around the corner, so...
You filled out 11, no.
Mm-hmm.
But then the rest is, you know, blank. Even criminal history, has any individual identity vote have been above? Da-da-da, you'd want to say, you know, you just want to answer the questions. Yes, no, yes, no.
And Michelle has the original application, so they can...
You can mark it up.
Yep.
Okay, I, because I thought that was if we have a management agreement is where a licensee authorizes a third party to control the daily operations. So we, that, that we don't, so I think that's...
I think you're correct, I just, there's a bunch of yes, no boxes.
Okay.
You can just go through and fill them out as appropriate.
Sure.
That'll tie it up if they come back, it'll be better off.
And everybody's fine with it, a fire chief, a police chief, a building inspector, and our health inspector.
All, all we're needing is them.
Yeah.
I don't have any, I assume she's asking tip certified? Did Mary ask that question?
She didn't ask that, no.
We do have, yes, we have.
I can't believe that, that's usually her standard question, which is a good question.
Yes, yeah.
Get me wrong. And you all are, you all, three of you are?
No, just one.
One of you?
Yeah, one, only one of us needs to be, yeah.
But you will be there?
Yes, oh, yes.
Nice.
Yeah. And if we hire any other people, they will be, but right now we don't have any employees, so...
All right.
Do we have any more discussion on it, or do you want to...
I think the only thing we need to talk about, and it's not an issue, but that has come up, is the question of the patio. And the patio is currently being shared. Michelle did confirm with ABCC that ABCC does not have an issue with a patio being shared. So it's, the town could, if it wanted, but right now I think Brush It Off uses the patio.
They technically, yes, they upkeep it with us.
They can use it.
They can use it, yes.
Both entities can use the patio right now. ABCC does not have a problem. And I think from the town's standpoint, as long as you're keeping track of who your servers are serving, it becomes the, the more, most important.
Right, so our plan for that patio is to have outdoor events, and when we do, we actually have handheld devices to go down there and have a person serving.
That's how you'll control who, right.
Like throwing people out there with, you know, not knowing, yes.
So as long as, just for the board, because the board has asked this question before on the shared patio. Michelle did follow up with ABCC, um, and there doesn't seem to be an issue on, there's no issue on their part. It's, they threw it back on us, so...
Personally, for me, if ABCC doesn't have an issue, then I, I don't have an issue.
Yep.
And both entities serve alcohol, so... It'd be a little different if one didn't. You'd get confused.
Right.
Work it off your liquor license, you know?
Exactly.
So, okay, great, um, ready for, uh, motion, or...
Sure, I will, uh, move to approve the new liquor license filed by Into the Grain LLC, subject to the pro forma, uh, updates we discussed, uh, a little earlier. For the premises currently located at 559 Main Street, Unit 208, Fistale, Massachusetts, 01518.
All right, great, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any more discussion? All in favor? Great, good luck.
All right, thank you so much.
I just wanted to thank them, it's been a long process, and so I appreciate your patience as we tried to get everybody together.
Thank you so much, it was super helpful with getting everyone together, so we appreciate that.
It's good that you do all this, because then you can tell your insurance company, we did it.
I just, the axes and alcohol, if I was an insurance company here, I'm not sure. That should be the name of the place, axes and alcohol.
Thank you.
Have a good one, thank you.
God bless.
All right, next up, action items. Consideration and possible action on new job description for firefighter EMT.
So to address actually A through C on the action items, they maybe voted as a block or separately. These are job descriptions that already existed, but were not in the proper format. The Personnel Committee reviewed them, we have a few typographical errors that need to be corrected, like periods at the end of the bullet points, and one repeated line, and one letter correction on bullet S is, should be, should be bullet S and not bullet T. So just, um, basically, scribbler type errors that do need to be corrected. But other than that, the Personnel Board did support these.
Okay.
That's for A, B, C, right? D, D is different.
A, B, C, D is separate, yes.
And the, these are all consistent with the collective bargaining agreement?
Yes, there's been no issue, and these are all reviewed.
Okay.
No change in any of the, the, um, the language, it's all formatting.
Oh, okay, um, then I'm, unless anybody has anything else, I'm comfortable making a motion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready to go, I don't have any discussion on it.
I move that, I guess as a block I'll do it, that we approve the new job description for firefighter EMT, parenthetical, basic, R-A-E-M-T. Uh, the new job description for firefighter, and the new job description for firefighter paramedic has provided to us this evening.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? Next, next up, we have consideration and possible action on reconciliation of grade seven job scale, you want to...
So I brought this to the Personnel Board as well. This was a discussion that we started to have at the retreat, that came up in reference to the Recreation Director position, and the potential discussion of regrading or relooking at, uh, job descriptions and whatnot. In the process of reviewing that, apart from any question of changing the grade, what I found was that there, in, within grade seven are two wage scales. And it's the only grade that has two separate wage scales. So if you're in grade seven, you might have been 7A, or you might have been 7B. I discussed this with the Personnel Committee, they had some recollection that this happened because one person who's at the higher grade has technically a 40-hour week, and the others do not. And so they base the higher on the 40-hour week.
I thought it was a compromise myself, but...
Well, that was what Personnel recollected it that way, I, I, and nobody could sort of come to any other conclusion. There had originally...
Well, it's about grade seven.
So it's the IT director is the higher, the IT administrator is the higher. And then the other two are the Recreation Director and the Economic Development Coordinator. So you have a director at the lower of the sevens. The problem is, there's no hourly associated number, which we could calculate, that's not the problem. But where it becomes complicated is, if you're a grade seven, you're a grade seven, and the range should reflect that. The question of 40 versus 37.5 hours is really hard to quantify. We call these employees hourly employees, but not one of them gets paid overtime. Their salary, effectively, they operate as salaried professionals. So it would mean that, let's say, somebody with 40 hours might be required to have a 40-hour technical schedule, but he may work 45 hours in a week. But the same holds true for the Recreation Director, who may work 40 hours or 41 hours, and does not get any difference in her salary for that. And has the same level of expectations to come in on a weekend or nights. In fact, more expectations in that particular job case. So my...
Why don't we just make them all 40 hours, then?
Well, the problem is because Town Hall hours are 37.5, and technically, because we have, you have administrative staff that isn't expected necessarily to stay extra hours and can flex versus professional staff, management staff, who is expected to stay.
So, but the IT person and our Economic Development are at 40 hours.
No, IT is, the other two are technically not.
Oh, the other two are both not.
So I could put it that what we could do is call them all, grade seven is just a 40-hour grade, and call it that. And whether that, because I will tell you, the Economic Development Director works some weekends to, is at events. You know, it, it's very hard when we call these hourly jobs, but we expect them to be professionals who stay and work nights or weekends, and be treated that way. They might flex the time, you know, come in an hour late. If you've worked all Sunday at a farmer's market, you might take the first part of Monday off if you can. But we don't, they're not hourly employees from the standpoint of any overtime for that. I just have a philosophically hard time looking at two different pay scales in the same grade. If we're going to follow this classification, then it's hard for me to understand how a classification system sees grade seven two different ways, and then you make one employee 40 hours, so you can pay more. That employee does work the 40 hours, I'm not, he certainly earns every penny, and that's why I would never look to adjust down at all. Not that you would ever take money away from somebody. I mean, we could call the other two 40 hours and say, grade seven's a unique grade that has a 40-hour expectation. But, you know, again, the, these aren't jobs where we're necessarily monitoring, you know, the, the recreation's going on a bus trip to, to the Boston Museum of Science Thursday. They may not be back at four o'clock at the close of business. Maybe they are, maybe they won't.
Yeah, no, I get, I get it, but I think from an equity point of view, that... I think if one of them is 40 hours, and it's getting paid a certain amount at grade seven, then I think they all should be at 40 hours and paid at, um, at that grade. I don't have a problem doing away with the bifurcation, but I guess I do have a problem if we don't address the 37.5 versus 40. Just, just out of like, like, like a fairness, because I guess that classification professionals did that for a reason. And if we want to do away with it, then let's make everybody 40, and then everybody's treated exactly the same. And I know they're really salaried people, and they have to come in regardless, but even on the face of it, to me, to me, it's incomplete to do half of it and not all of it. You know, like, change the 37.5 and make it just one grade, but not just the hours.
What I would suggest, though, is to keep it in continuity with every other job in Town Hall and COB, that it's 37.5 for all, as opposed to that one having more hours than, let's say, I mean, not that, you, we all know, let's say, the planner works more than 37 and a half hours, right? She typically in a week is working at least that, if not 10 hours more.
Right.
She's 37 and a half, it's really hard to justify elevating everybody up to 40 in one grade, making that a 40-hour grade.
Drop the 40 to 37.5.
I think you just, it should, everybody should be 37.5 at a higher hourly wage than...
Why was one of them at 40? Did Personnel recall that as well?
No. Uh, I, what happened was there was another position that came in and scored at grade seven. That position was moved up to a grade eight, and I don't know why that was reclassified. And then there seemed to be a feel that the, the grade didn't really fit the wage that they thought the person should be making, they increased it to 40. It is a highly important position, there's no question.
Well, we, the board, I don't know what position you're referring to, but the board did make some adjustments that they felt was the...
And then I think they felt that from an equity standpoint, that position needed to make more money, but nobody wanted to move it necessarily up to the higher grade. And you run into a problem where the Recreation Director is, i- if you put that at a higher grade, now you have your Recreation Director lower than all your other directors, and IT administrator, and a whole host. It becomes really hard to gauge importance, if you will. You can't function without IT, but Recreation is a central part of your town as well. So it, I, I agree that there should be equity, but logically should be that everybody's on a 37.5. Because we, we all know that they're all working more than that anyway,[1536.81] Because we, we all know that they're all working more than that anyway, and nobody's eligible for overtime. If that IT administrator, he works his forty, no question. He's probably going to continue to work his forty. It's just going to be that the hourly wage would be a higher per hour wage, effectively. But I do think that, yes, you're right, to have one classified as forty.
I don't, I don't have a problem with this. I just don't want it to open up a Pandora's box when we spent a lot of time in that classification system.
And to that point, yes.
It's kind of a waste of all of our time and all of our money. So I'm, I'm just hoping this is the last adjustment that we, that we need to make. Because otherwise, we were trying to avoid doing this piecemeal. That was the whole reason we did it. We did it the way we did it. And they had a lot of history in terms of looking at classifications. We were careful about who we chose. I thought some of the positions, they didn't place appropriately, and that was one of them. Um, you know, I felt that way for recreation. I felt that way for conservation. Um, but the town accountant and the assistant town clerk. And I made it known, that's in the minutes. But I just, at this point, I, I don't want everybody coming forward and saying, well, you know what? I'm not really a grade eight, I should be a grade nine. And I'm not really a grade nine.
And I can tell you, it will, they will, it will happen.
Wow.
But, um, but I think that, you know, we, there should be an equity on the, the number of hours. But I also, as I said, that there should be an equity on the, the grade. It just strikes me as odd to have two levels within the same grade. If you're a grade seven, you know, you call it forty hours, you're paying him a lower, you know, you raise the hourly wage or the same hourly wage for more hours. It really is just a way to adjust salaries. And that's okay. I get what the goal was, and IT is so critical. And it's hard to recruit IT, frankly. And, and the particular person does a great job. It has nothing to do with the person, and that's what becomes really hard about this.
Right.
Is, I'm just trying to look at positions and not people.
Well, there's two questions here. There's an abstraction around thirty-seven point five hours that we should be doing the same way for everybody. And then there's, we've created two line items, where effectively, we don't have ten grades, we have eleven grades. And so, or more than that, whatever than, we have one more grade than we meant to. Which, if that's the circumstance, that's the circumstance. But I think there should just be a recommendation more than a lot of open conversation around it. Because I think, you know...
Yeah, and now, and I just, now I'm just going to get texted, some are thirty-five, I know some are thirty-seven and a half.
I'm thirty-five.
Some are forty, you're thirty-five?
I'm thirty-five. I think barber staff's thirty-seven.
Barber staff, barber's thirty-seven, barber staff is thirty-seven and a half. I mean, this is the problem. So if we start going, I, I think you're right, there should be an equity on all of it. Nobody should be, it shouldn't be based on hours. And what strikes me as odd is that...
Well, salary people shouldn't period.
And no, and that's the problem, and, and they're all basically sal, they're expected to perform, we can't have it both ways. We can't say, well, you know, if you're a professional, you should stay an extra few hours a week. You know, because you're a professional. But then say, well, thirty-five hours versus forty hours makes a difference. Because how do you quantify that if we're not looking, if we're not making them punch a clock?
I, I think we just, let's get all the information, because I think a lot of open conversation with all of the facts isn't particularly productive in this area.
Yeah.
That'd be my, so I guess, think it's good to know, but I think we just keep processing.
So what, what, what else, what else do you need at this point?
Well, we're, are we, I guess we need a recommendation as to whether or not we need to correct whatever the weekly hours are, and whether or not we need to address the additional step or not, and how that all shakes out. And I, I don't know the answer to it off the top of my head. You guys were all involved in that conversation. Sounds like, I'm glad I wasn't.
Yeah, maybe, tell us what, you know, because some are at thirty-five, some are at thirty-seven point five, some are, I guess, the IT person's at forty. I mean, they're salaried, so it shouldn't make a difference, except I think it does make a difference when they, when they go over and then say, I want to, you know, comp my time. You know, because then they go back to their thirty-seven point five versus forty, I think. Or at least it's happened in the past. Um, and so, yeah, I don't, I guess I'm confused why salaried people have that thirty-seven point five or forty. Or that...
I, I agree, I agree. I think, I think there may be some laws, on exempt versus non-exempt. But the problem is, if we're not paying them overtime, then it shouldn't matter if they're thirty-five.
No, but I think they comp their time. We don't pay them, but if someone's at thirty-seven point five and they work forty-two, are they looking to comp those five hours?
I believe comp time was eliminated, so it's just flex.
Not money, but time.
No, but even, even hour-for-hour compensatory time, documented compensatory time, was eliminated at some point.
We, we did, but...
It's informal flex, basically.
But it's close. You know, that informal flex is very close.
I mean, you could, could you conceivably put the IT director at the same schedule for town hall, same hours as everybody else? And could he get his work done in those hours with the occasional, again, like everybody else, an hour late here, an hour late there? Um, you know, that, that would be the question.
Yeah, I just don't know why he's at forty and everybody else isn't.
Yeah.
And I think, I'm going to, I'm going to go with Jamie here, where I agree that we need more time, more recommendation. And, and I, the more open conversation without the facts is going to cause a lot of problems.
Yep.
So, all right. Mary, do you have anything else on that?
No, no, I mean, that's just useful, and maybe we just do away with ours. But it would be nice to see what everybody's at. Because I know that was an issue with the staff in the finance area.
Well, they're, they're...
The finance department. Now, now there's new people, but at the time, they said, we always end up staying a little longer.
They're thirty-seven five, yeah.
We, we have to stay longer than everybody else, because we're, and I said, why? And they said, because that's the way it is for us. So I, I mean, I don't know, like, if we adjust for one, I just want to make sure that we, we're doing it for everybody appropriately.
This is the challenge. So they're thirty-seven point five, which is where the number came in my head. I think it's finance. And are there a lot of days when they stay till four-thirty instead of four? Sure.
I think always. I think that, that was the rule for the, the four, the people who used to be there. Regardless if they were busy or not, they, they had to stay.
The extra.
Yes, yes, and that was a gripe of theirs. Um, so I, you know...
That may be why their list is hourly, because they are getting paid four, two and a half. And they're not expected to do major amounts of overtime at the clerical level. I think the challenge with these is, we have people mixed in here who are operating more at the management-type level, even though the IT administrator's not effectively a manager, but he is working in a management-level job. And our clerical staff, who, who, who have clear delineation of their time, they're not going to be expected to get called in for an emergency. They're, I mean, those are the expectations, it's sort of the differentiated. It's not really supervisory so much as it is expectation.
Right.
Um, I would never expect clerical staff to be, to come in on a Saturday, though on occasion, let's say at elections time, you might have a clerical staff member come in, and they can flex to a different day. Does that mean that they're working thirty-five versus thirty-seven and a half? Not really. I, it's very hard when you don't do overtime, and you, which is great, because we expect people to... So even that, I can't uniformly say that there aren't times when even our clerical staff isn't in. It, it's a challenge. So I don't mean to be dancing around it, but it's just that it's really more confusing than it should ever have to be.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll jump now to old business. Jamie, do you have any old?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Mary, do you have any old?
My only old is, and I didn't expect it tonight, but Michelle, are you working on, and maybe it was sent to me, so I'm a little behind in my emails. Are you working on the goals that we talked about?
Yes, I sent Robin the draft of everything.
Oh, okay, we didn't get anything yet. Okay, no, that's fine.
The draft that we typed up, we have to go through.
Okay, so we're going to kind of blend the old with the new, and, all right, awesome. That's it.
I have no old. Jamie, new?
None, thank you.
Mary, new? And I have no new. Our correspondence, letter from anonymous person. And I hate anonymous letters. Like, that's, I personally would just do away with anonymous correspondence. But I don't know if that's the board's wish or not.
I think we have to acknowledge it.
I think we do.
You know, I mean, the, the amount of credibility it gets is going to be determined by the fact that you don't know the source. But I think we still, it's still a correspondence that we get. Right, I mean, I mean, this isn't that helpful, because, you know... But anyways, for the record, I think we just need to say, two, six, twenty-three, went to Selectman Mary Blanchard about a person driving in less than a safe way, according to this letter, and drove a black light new Silverado pickup, pickup. But without a license plate, I, I don't even think the police can do anything with this. You know, if they, if there was a license plate number, it might be different.
Yeah.